So let me start. This is the pregame show of the regular meeting, but this is a meeting of the Board, St. County Board of Freeholders. Today's Tuesday, August 14, 2018. And I'll turn this over to my county administrator, Anthony Duff.
Freeholders, Arthur, Bartlett, Best.
Here.
Duffy.
Here.
Thor, Deputy Director James.
Here.
Rachel Lazar.
Thank you, Freeholder. We have with us here this evening Kathleen Karen, our Open Space Coordinator, and Kelly Ruffel, who is the Director of Historic and Cultural Affairs. Kathleen will be doing the municipal and nonprofit recommendations, and I guess Kelly, some joint effort here. Kelly will be doing the historic preservation recommendations.
First, Hal, give the recommendations.
Bring that mic closer.
I'll present the recommendations that do not require a public hearing, and then Kelly will present historic preservation, and then we'll have the public hearing. And I have a separate slide.
Excellent. They go away.
So, thank you, Freeholders, and thank you, public. This is the 2018 park development for municipal nonprofit projects. Recommendations from the Open Space Farmland and Historic Preservation Advisory. First recommendation is Loma Downe. It's for the Boathouse Basketball Court. This was applied for last year, was not recommended. It's basically redoing the entire basketball court. The asphalt, the mats, then they want to open benches, they want to remove the tree, unfortunately. They're asking for, or the committee's recommending 99 acres. Just to discuss. Thank you. The next recommendation is for City Green. City Green, as you may recall, is a nonprofit that is housed at the Schultes Farm in Clifton. They are the directors of the Dig-In Program, which provides funding for community gardens throughout the county. This particular project is to upgrade their greenhouse with new greenhouse plastic. There is a need for lighting at the parking area. They'd like to put in some water and solar at the new farm stand, which was funded last year, and shading and additional signage. The committee recommends $54,000 for this project. Next applicant is Hawthorne. They have a tennis court that is in need of rehabilitation. You can see from the photographs that there's a lot of crap, and the committee recommends $50,000 for this project. The New Weiss Center. The new nonprofit is the Highlands Nature Friends. This is located in Ringwood. This is, I believe, the third year that they've asked for funding to upgrade their buildings. They'd like to add some outdoor water fountains, drawbridge stations, and signage. The committee recommends $85,000 for this project. Next, the Borough of North Heldon is requesting playground resurfacing for the High Mountain Playground. This is near the High Mountain School. It is now owned by the Borough. They swapped some property with the Board of Ed, and the gate is also in need of repair. The recommendation is for $50,000. City of Passaic is requesting funding to turn this plaza into a food court and other small venue for gatherings. The recommendation is for $10,000, and on the next slide you'll see that they've already installed the mural. That's Alan Macho, who was an early astronaut. There's a rendering of the Mexican flag behind everyone, the Capitol Theater, and Caesar So again, the recommendation for this is $10,000. Next project is the Pompton Lakes Morse Canal Railway. This is an ongoing project. This is the final phase. This is in an area where there were flood byouts. It's creating a railway that's going to connect to municipal as well as county Open Space Pompton Water Park. The committee recommends, their request, which was $34,400. The next project is Prospect Park. Hofstra Park is their only recreational facility. It's multi-use, and they have a baseball field that is not currently being used. They originally applied for a much larger amount of money to put in an artificial soccer, artificial turf soccer field, but after consideration, the committee recommended to begin with to just remove the baseball dome and to put in an informal grass field there because they had talked about expanding it, and some of the committee members thought that might be problematic going forward. So the committee is recommending $50,000 to start for this project. Next is the Borough of Ringwood, applied for stone town recreational complex to put in an artificial turf field. This is a previously funded facility, and it's owned by the Board of Ed, but it is leased to the Borough. They have a long term. Recommendation is for 99 acres. The next project is Wayne Friends and Family Park. This is the dog park and playground of Lacko Bridge Road, which had been previously funded by the Freeholders. They need to expand their parking because it gets pretty busy there on the weekends. The recommendation is for $50,000. Wayne's next project is at Veterans Alliance Park, and this will help to create an area. They've already used some of their funding to put out this shelter because they do get large crowds, and if there's inclement weather, or if it's a very hot sunny day, it'll get people out of the weather. So they're also putting in a walkway, patio, and plans. The recommendation is for $68,500 to help them with that project. Finally, the Wayne Little League is another ongoing project. This for field and facility improvements such as new bleachers, a new public address system, electrical upgrades, and ongoing relations to their boathouse and concession stand, and the committee is recommending $85,000 for that project. So the total recommendations for projects that do not require a public hearing is $734,000. Any questions?
I know it's tough out there. The director has spread it all out. It seems to cover a lot of bases. Or under the wire there. I think you did a great job. Did a lot of thought and effort. It's uneasy to be there, and I understand.
The committee really tries to be there. You know, we look at what they've received previously, how much of their funding has been drawn down. If they have a lot of grants to renew projects, then they'll suggest something. At least they draw down that.
Good job.
Thank you.
Through the chair, the Ringwood project, where they're asking for an artificial turf field. The current field that we're looking at in the picture, that's regular grass, right? Beautiful.
It is beautiful. I think that the issue is that they wanted to put turf fields elsewhere, and they couldn't get the approval. But on a school-owned property, they're exempt from getting the permits, and it's also far away from the rest of the world.
Why are we giving to the school? What's the problem?
They lease it. They lease it to the.
Is it a rubber basin? Or is it pork?
It'll be pork. It'll be pork, but this is just a sort of simbolic. It's a lottery.
Yeah, but it normally runs a little over a million dollars. Where's the rest of the money coming from?
Ringwood has an Open Space Trust fund, and they're also applying to Green Acres.
Okay. And Green Acres is going to pay for them to get a synthetic turf field over the existing grass field that they already have?
They've done that.
Beautiful shape.
They have done that.
Okay. All right.
Got holes in it. There's water.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here for presenting on the historic preservation applications. The county received 12 total historic preservation applications, and tonight the committee has recommended six of those applications. So the first two I will lump together, the Friends of Wallace Homestead submitted three applications. The committee is recommending to award two of those projects. So the Wallace Homestead, if you have not been there, the 99 acre farm located in West Milford. The property has several different structures dating from 1824 to 1914. It is certified eligible or listing with the Historic Preservation Office for architectural significance. So the first project, which is a priority number one, is to rehabilitate a barn, a stone barn, which they want to repurpose and then use as like an art space for their residents. So the committee is recommending $25,000 to complete sort of their structural component, which is to repair and replace the concrete floor so that they can at least get in there and start using the barn. The second project would be their porch rehabilitation. It includes removing, you know, existing materials and replacing them all in kind , which is wooden wood. Their request was $8,430, and the committee is recommending the full amount for that project. The third project would be to be Hamilton dot Wagner House. This is located in Clifton. It has been opened as a public museum since 1973. It is listed on the State and National Register of Third Places. This building is extremely important to the city of Clifton, especially for their school programs. They have, all of their third grade classes that go throughout the year, it's a requirement in town. So their application is to restore their interior space, the woodwork floors, the doors, and then the outside shutters. So the committee is recommending $40,000 to complete this project.
What year was that built?
The house was built in two stages. The earlier part is dated around 1730, and the later part is 1830. The next project is located in the city of Patterson. It's by the New Jersey Community Development Corporation, for Lucasella Park. Now, Lucasella Park is in the boundary of the Great Falls Historic District, which was designated in 1996. The park itself was sort of memorialized and dedicated in 1992 to Lucasella. So NJCDC right now is proposing to redo pathways, new plantings, revitalizing the landscape in that area, including adding a playground for children with disabilities. And this is all based on a previously funded project by the community in 2016. So this is to implement that plan, and the committee is recommending $50,000 to support their efforts. So the last two projects are for the city of Patterson. The first is towards Hinchcliffe Stadium's facade restoration phase two. As we all know, the Hinchcliffe Stadium is very prominent in Patterson, is part of the Great Falls National Historic Park Boundary. It was listed as a national historic landmark in 2014 for its association with the Negro Leagues and its architecture. It was built around 1931, 1932 by the Works Progress Administration in government bonds. Currently, it's under phase one restoration, which is, it's not pictured here in the image. It's the farther end, which includes ticket booths, the entrance way, and the facade along Liberty Street. So this would be phase two, to restore this facade all along Maple Street. The committee is recommending $200,000 to assist in this project, and because it's over the threshold, this requires a public hearing.
Who does this warrant that to move?
It's, I believe, leased to the city of Patterson.
It's leased to the city.
Is it a lease?
There it is.
Is there a lease in place?
They had to put it as part of their application.
Okay.
They had entered into a memorandum, and after the city passed those bonds, it will be restored.
But is that complete? No. Oh, it's not even close. No. The building was leased. This is a renovation. You have a copy of the lease, and there is a.
Yes, in their application.
To be clear, this is only to maintain historic aspects of the outside of the facade, not to.
No, this is part of the overall.
I don't think there's an actual lease.
It's an MOU.
Yeah, there's no lease. There was a memorandum of understanding. I'm going to have to abstain from this because I'm employed by the Board of Ed's case, but there was a memorandum of understanding that was never fully executed, so I don't know if there's legally binding.
We have it. I'll pull it out after.
I was on the board.
It's a signed agreement between Patterson.
How are you with that lease?
Yeah, we'll take a look at it.
We'll get those answers.
And it's part of the public hearing, so it cannot be actually taken.
That's good. Yes. In the absence of a lease or a, or a, you can't give the board's.
There's nothing actually said. I'm sorry, I don't think there's anything that says that we can't give the board's case. It's false. There is.
The applicant is not the board's advocate.
That may be so, but the building, the structure is old. There's no lease. I get it, like, there's hope, like, the field. If you said, look, I'll be leaving on my way to council, and I have to review it and give us an opinion as to whether or not this is sufficient. Do you have a phone call? Yeah, forty-five days.
And the last one is also for the city of Patterson. It's their priority number two. It's for a planning document or construction documents for the Ben Houghton House. Ben Houghton House is located in West Side Park. It is the oldest structure still standing in the city of Patterson and owned by the city of Patterson. It dates to 1742. It did house the Old Timers Association, which had a sort of a sports hall of fame and museum in there until 2010. After Hurricane Irene came and flooded out the building, and then they had to, you know, the Old Timers Association had to leave, and the building then was closed. So they received previous grants to start work on this building. They have a preservation plan complete, so these documents would kind of be the second phase of that sort of planning for the full restoration of this building to open it back up to the public. Patterson's request is $75,000, and the committee is requesting $75,000 for this project.
Sorry. Again, so that's for planning?
Yes.
Okay. Wasn't there already a planning grant given to them? That they do plan?
For?
For restoration of this particular.
They have a preservation plan, which was a conditions assessment, which is like phase one. The second phase would be the construction documents to then go out to get. So this is for those documents.
That was not funded for the Freeholders.
I know it wasn't funded to us. I just know it was funded and that they have plans in place. They showed them on to us. We walked inside, and it was really pretty.
Are they just repairing? Is that construction?
No, no, no. It's construction documents. I can trust that. Let me take that back. It was architectural stuff, but I don't know.
Probably schematics because the preservation plan outlined use, like proposed uses, so that they can go out for funding, and it outlined all the deficiencies wrong with the building. So you probably would have seen some sorts of architectural drawings that would indicate, you know, the roof, the floors.
So my only problem with these plans, and we do a lot of them, is that we spend a lot of money on paper, and yet the building continues to crumble, and it's been crumbling for a while, and, you know, to the point that some of the plans are obsolete because you haven't done anything, you know, to do it. So whatever the assessment was when it was done, the study was done, is no longer relevant because it's gotten so worse that, you know, you can't even use that document, and then we're going to have to go back out again to plan, and plan, and plan. Is there a plan in place to actually get the money to fix it? Do we know what the estimate will be too?
The estimate, which is in their plan, is about a million dollars to fully restore that building. They are, the city is going to apply to the New Jersey Historic Trust to fund part of the construction, which that grant round is ready after. It is, that'll be in the spring of 2019.
Will the building be able to hold on till?
I hope so.
Okay.
Do you know how long ago that was?
The plan was just finished last year.
Oh, what he's talking about?
That's like three, four years ago, right?
No, we just, because we got awarded in early 2017, and they had to complete by the end of 2017.
There's one question. Previous application with Hinchcliffe. What do we think, William?
City of Patterson.
The city doesn't count.
The city of Patterson.
By the way, I really would like to, I really would like to release. The longer the better. We had had meetings about this years ago, and because they can't apply, we encouraged them to report it, or some members of your board, I shouldn't say the board, to form a nonprofit, and it's a nonprofit, you know, and then they had problems, and oh, we have to use it for a field. Look, we're not using it for a field now, and if you let it crumble, you're never going to use it for a field. So it's a little sticky in a way to me because they would not give it up, but in the meantime, they can't fund anything that needs to be done. So if some of that could be taken care of by a lease, you know, nobody's saying that they don't want the Board of Ed, schools, and Patterson, if that's reconstructed, to be able to use the field, but you have to be able to get them. So I'm hoping that they revisit it, but if the short step is to actually get a lease and not an MOU, I'm fine with that. That's, you know, it's an important building. It's an important structure. There's only two in the country, so it'd be nice to try to maintain one, but you're talking millions and millions and millions of dollars. It's not, you know, putting a facade up is really nice, but it does nothing to the structure of the building. So, you know, I hope that they take a different, a different, a new view. Okay, now we're going to go into the public hearing?
Yes.
Yes. All right. We need a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we'll do that first. We'll do the motion. Oh. One of your presentation first? Do you have a presentation? We'll set up the.
Okay, so these are the park development projects, and in addition is the Hinchcliffe Stadium project that fell under historic preservation. I do not have a slide for that, but we'll save it. These are the 2018 Open Space applications for park development that require a public hearing.
This is the subject of this public hearing?
That's correct.
Correct.
The first project is in the city of Clifton. This is Zelenka Park. It's a multi-use park, and they would like to add some additional lighting, move some lighting. It needs irrigation, the field house, they'd like to add some additional parking, bleachers, benches. It's in, it's in a lot of, so the committee is recommending $250,000 for this project, as it was mentioned. And Borough of Heldon, this is an ongoing improvement project to the road athletic facility, additional lighting and safety lighting, and some signage. The committee is recommending 137,950 acres. River Falls Lewis Street Field. This is an existing field in an area closer to the river floods. They would like to, they've been able to expand it because of some of the flood byouts. The lower right corner in the photo there shows where there was a road vacated, and they're proposing additional parking there, just a gravel parking lot, no new bed per base coverage. They'd like to remove the basketball court and extend to the ball field. They're also looking for funds for new lighting. So the recommendation for this is $200,000. Next one is for the city of Patterson. We met Laura out there on our site visit, and some of you.
The city.
I'm sorry, the city of the site. Sorry. The, last year, you may recall that the city put in a ice rink. It was a temporary ice rink, and Laura is really excited about this project. He got committed all excited about it, and so they'd like to put in a year-round splash park in the warm weather ice rink in Poolerwood, November to April. It's an area right near the boathouse and the concession stand. They had a wonderful turnout last year. He said it was really beautiful to see children from all the different communities interacting, and he said that's, you know, that's really part of his vision for the cities, to, you know, help us all get to know each other and not, you know, stay in our homes. So the recommendation for this is $250,000. They will be asking for Green Acres money as well.
What is synthetic ice?
It's, okay, so if you can think about their panels, and they float it on the surface, and there's something in there that keeps them cold all the time. I don't know a whole lot about it, but, I mean, he told us about.
Have been used before.
It was used here at this exact spot last year. It's been used in other parts of the country, and.
Oh, is it sort of, so it's full of, maybe it's just not water.
Yeah, some of it is.
I'm sorry. It's not actual ice. It's plastic. It's a hard plastic with a, like a liquid coating on the top that allows you to use regular ice skates to skate on it. Think about it like a cutting board.
Does it have a lifespan?
It does have a lifespan. I think it's 10 years, but it has to be treated, you know, with a special kind of chemical that receives that for a lifetime. It's called scan ice.
Thank you.
And then.
Yeah, okay. Perfect.
Finally is the Frankie's Akaria and Woodland Park. This field project, this has been ongoing, been very close to completion of the funds for this large project to turn a natural turf soccer field into an artificial turf soccer field. And again, I'm going to mention Hinchcliffe Facade on Maple Street, part of the historic preservation. That is a recommendation for $200,000.
Can I ask the chair, Woodland Park, the Woodland Park, do you have to lay down?
Not Woodland Park. Because it's.
The area in Woodland?
Well, it's in the neighborhood of Hinchcliffe byouts, but I don't believe it's like. It's far, it's on that peninsula. You know where that is over, is main, or is neighborhood somewhere?
The time drop?
As far as, as far as I know.
I actually think it's hard and a little bit wet, and it was safe, and it actually burned, but I think it's okay.
Well, one of our committee members lives in that neighborhood, and did you mention that it was a fire?
No, they didn't. They weren't.
So the total public hearing recommendations for park development is $1,087,950 plus the $200 for the Hinchcliffe. Next.
This hearing is pursuant to NJSA 40:12-15, Doc. 3, regarding the 2018 Passaic County Open Space Farmland and Historic Preservation Trust Fund Award for the proposed expenditure is over $100,000. The presentation on the 2018 Passaic County Open Space Farmland and Historic Preservation Trust Fund was held tonight, Tuesday, August 14, 2018. The following public hearing was advertised in both the Bergen Record and the Herald News on June 29, 2018, specifying the time, date, and location of the public hearing.
For this, can I have a roll for the purposes of the public hearing?
Freeholders, Otter, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James.
Here. I have a motion to open the public hearing on the 2018 Passaic County Open Space Farmland and Historic Preservation Trust Fund project recommendation.
Second.
Is anybody present, desired to be heard, recommendations that we have heard tonight? If you, if you already have it, please come up to the podium, and I, right, we'll go to the comment.
I move to close the public push.
The second, second podium.
Freeholders, Otter, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James.
Thank you very much for your, for your recommendations. The 45-day period will be if you have it. And from the public hearing, I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Make that motion. Freeholders, Otter, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James.
All right, very good.
Okay, next on my agenda, each year, the New Jersey Association of Counties, along with Investors Bank and public service, give scholarships to graduating seniors from Passaic County, well, from all technical schools throughout the, throughout the state, but obviously here at Passaic County Technical Institute. And today, we are honored to have with us three of the four recipients of the scholarship, right? Two of the four, I'm sorry. We have Leslie Jimenez, Leslie's a 2018 graduate, she'll be attending Montclair State University. Leslie, why don't you come forward? And she's going to study child advocacy and child psychology. That is a passion of mine. And Leslie is the recipient of one of the Investor Bank scholarships for 500 dollars. Louis, is the other, Jeffrey Sanchez, is Jeffrey, is, is Jeffrey the other?
Yes, Jeffrey's here.
Ah-ha, got it. Jeffrey is a recipient of the PSENG scholarship, graduated this, this past year from PCTI. He's going to Italian William Patterson University and will study computer science. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone, for having me. My name is everyone with Investors Bank, and I'm looking forward to being Leslie Jimenez for the 2018 Investors Bank Foundation. How's your?
Thank you to the Investors Bank and the freeholders. I wasn't really expecting the call, so when I got the call from Mr. Anhoff, I was surprised, I was at work, and when I answered the phone, I didn't recognize the number, but it took me by surprise that I actually got the scholarship. And I have my high school guidance counselor thing, Ms. Alema Pata, who actually helped me apply for the scholarship. So, I'm very grateful, first to God and to everyone who made this possible.
On behalf of the Freeholder Board, Investors Bank want to present you with this check, these two recognitions. While we take a photo.
So, these scholarships are made possible every year through the partnership of our county Investors Bank and the New Jersey Association of Counties, which, just like it sounds, is the organization of New Jersey's 21 counties that advocates for counties, and in particular, in this case, for county technical high schools like PCTI, where we are very proud to say that over many years, these scholarships from Investors Bank have made it possible for young people to go on to all sorts of institutions, all sorts of careers, all starting out at Passaic County Tech. So, with that, I want to ask Jeffrey Sanchez to come up, you're another recipient of this year's scholarship, and can you talk for a minute about what you're going to do?
Well, this was a kind of a surprise as well for me, you know, I wasn't actually expecting to win the scholarship or, you know, anything at all. In fact, I kind of forgot that I had been applied to this scholarship. It was, it was like a month or two ago, so it just kind of slipped my mind. But in all honesty, I'm actually quite grateful for the money because it's going to help me to buy some equipment so that I could start my, how can I say, that I could start learning before I actually enter college. I want to be studying some computer science, so in the future, I could become a pretty good programmer, that I could go into some sort of careers that I'll deal with, that I could deal with energy, good energy resourcing programs, and I want to be helpful to some engineers, that they could have some sort of breakthrough with, how can I say this, sort of like creating a miniaturized power source. You know, there's a lot of pollution that's being created every single year, so I want to just help be green, I guess.
Wonderful. PSENG Foundation and NJ, please present you with this check, as well as certificates of recognition from the freeholders of NJ.
proposal to ask the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey to widen the George Washington Bridge sidewalks. Whichever you're more comfortable, Neil, you want to sit, or you want to stand at the podium? You told him to sit there? Okay. Don't listen to me, listen to him.
I'll, I'll sit here, it's all right. James, freeholders, and I'd like to give the opportunity to speak in support of the resolution, calling on the fourth third to widen the bike paths in George Washington Bridge. This is really more of an update since, since I last spoke in March, and you've got copies of supporting materials. Remarks are brief, but the table works as well. Three Bronx community boards representing 400,000 residents have called for wider paths, as have the Hudson freeholders who've joined Bergen and Union's support. Bergen released its master plan to connect county parks with bikeways, two of which it shares with Passaic. And New York has at the same time committed 90 million dollars to expand bike access across six Harlem River bridges. Both programs will feed cyclists directly onto the George and face some of its obstacle lessons unless the Port Authority upgrades its plans. Last month, New Jersey Spotlight published an op-ed which takes the lessons learned from the shutdown of New York's L subway to repair the, the Panarsi tubes, and applies them to the Hudson rail tunnels. The audience, the recommendation is for expanded cycling across the George, and the same capacity will minimize the new normal, which is disruptions which will be caused by conductor shortage and the rollout of positive train control eventually on the Bergen main lines. But overall, the expanded cycling that's stimulated by wider paths will provide residents, will enhance opportunities for recreation, exercise, commuting, and shopping. It will reduce public health spending while bolstering tourism and property tax base. It will help to reach it, attract millennial employers, retain college graduates, and accelerate the adoption of re-infrastructure and complete streets. I'm here to answer your questions, otherwise I want to thank Freeholder Bartlett and the Planning and Economic Development Committee for taking this up and all in for your consideration.
Neil, thank you very much for coming out and presenting this, and in particular, for coming to speak with us twice this year. This relates to work that we're doing in all kinds of different ways. On your way here, you probably saw the markings on our street, part of our complete streets effort that is making it safer for bicyclists. We're working with counties to our east and west to preserve and restore the Morris Canal Greenway, what ultimately will be 103 miles of walkable and bicycable green space from the Hudson River to the Delaware Valley. And your point about making sure that all infrastructure included are regional bridges are responsive to bicycles and pedestrians as well is much appreciated, and you've been a consistent advocate here and at NJTPA, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. And that concludes our portion of the conference adjournment.
Always a great job.
Oh, thank you.
Going to review the consent of the K1 to K65, actually, can I cancel? Do we have any list?
Yes. Yes, Director. This will be K66, it's a resolution for the award of contract to grade construction for the Weasel Brook Park Site remediation project in the city of Clifton, as per bid. That's it.
Do we have any reason to go over to the next?
We do not.
In that case, you know, I have a motion to adjourn the conference adjournment.
Make that motion. Freeholders, Otter, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James.
And we got them, so we're now going to move into our regular meeting. This is the regular meeting, Shane County Board of Freeholders for August 14, 2018. Can I adjourn the open public hearing?
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement that open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including the annual notice adopted, the reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk, post in the administration building, and mail to two news stations in accordance with the provisions of the law. Freeholders, Otter, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Lozara.
Thank you, everybody stand, please, for dedication and pledge allegiance, and after the pledge of allegiance, we're going to have a moment of silence, remember those who served in our military, lost their lives, and a moment of silence, please, for our exiled fellow, who is counseling the same, best, who have unexpectedly, and for those who are suffering through the flooding, particularly in our own county, but everywhere in the state of New Jersey.
Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power, rules over them in love, be gracious enough so to bless thy servants, our freeholders in this county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord, amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you.
And motions will be granted by 70.
Come in.
Thank you.
Freeholders, freeholders, Otter, yes, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James.
Yes. Our no proclamation is to vote on, so we'll go to Freeholder Reports. Sandy Lozara is in the way of conference, she will be back at our next meeting. I will pass on to Freeholder Otter.
I have, I have one question, too. I, I do want to say, as the representative on the, on the open space committee, the Freeholder Board, I want to thank the great work from where they've left, the captain, Kelly, and all staff, as well, they don't, oh, I'm sorry. I want to thank you for your work, as well as all staff involved, and the board that built here this time to help make decisions. It's not easy, we have more formal applications than there is plenty, and all these projects have some worthiness, and all these projects are employed by many of our county residents, so it's, it's not easy to make, but it's, I think it's one of the most rewarding things that I'm part of, and what they can do is save the whole of a county of open space and reservation.
I just want to acknowledge the exceptional work and the dedication of our local elected officials that we've seen over the last couple of days with the flooding, particularly in Woodland Park and Little Falls. It's incredibly impressive to see mayors and council members not only out there responding directly to the needs of individual constituents, but also making sure people are keeping comprised of what they want. I also want to thank Governor Murphy for coming up to town yesterday to take a look at the really exceptional destruction that took place. I was literally sitting in an airport in Florida waiting for ground landing privileges to reopen in Newark, so I missed Saturday's rains myself, but, you know, when you see cars washing down the river, it really puts in perspective the force of nature, and I'm grateful that we've got local elected officials, and also thanks to the folks in county government who have worked with them as those needs relate to county roads and other county facilities. And then just finally, don't forget, everyone, this Thursday through Sunday, Passaic County Fair, care of that.
Thank you, Freeholder, the, the, the best, George.
Just here's the county fair, once again, with the, all the rain, our county TPW workers and attend, did a great job, nice city government in our, our area, and what a shame that Councilwoman Monica, too early, what a sweet woman, very, 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 honestly, other than that, see it's fair.
And Freeholder LaFour, by the way, you've done a great job in Woodland Park, you know, like, which, we're not saying you normally do, but.
It's got to be on a duress, don't speak director, any, you know, water inch high, it's got to worry, you know, and I can't imagine that, that kind of work. You ever seen one of those rains here, Ron?
So, there are, Director, through you, there are 29 resolutions on the agenda this evening reflecting the work of the Finance Committee. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank county departments, department head and their staff, specifically Charlene, Director of Board of Health, thank you so much for stepping up. Kenny Simpson, the Road Department, outstanding job. Bobby Lyons, I saw him here, the ODM Director, fantastic job. The Sheriff's Department really stepped up. Without all of your help, we wouldn't have gotten through that very difficult situation. And once again, it shows how, how well county government and local government work together, and they have a common goal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move on to the presentations, and I have a motion to open the public push.
Make that motion. Freeholders, Otter, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James.
Yes. That brings us to the oral portion, public portion, you have a motion to open the public push, please.
How long?
Freeholders, freeholders, Otter, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James. Yes. Anybody wishing to speak? On the podium, state your name and address in the last few minutes. See you know.
Yes.
Good.
Kelly, our chairman of the board.
Kelly, our Chief Director.
Good evening, Mark. Go 48 Pine, Chris Terrace, Wayne, New Jersey. Unfortunately, I can't get to these meetings because of the time. I know once I spoke about maybe moving them later, but today, I actually had a day lost a long time here. I don't know how long ago I had come up here and I had spoken about the, I guess it's, what I'll call it, is filling the cracks in our county roads to prolong the life. And I was told we were looking into getting whatever machinery or equipment we need. And my sister-in-law lives in Warren County. If you go down their county roads, you can see that they tar their cracks. That prolongs the life of the pavement, saving the taxpayers money, okay? So I don't know where we stand in getting this equipment, but I think it's past due. Here we, again, we put rumble strips and spent, I don't know how much money, to put those rumble strips down county roads. And I believe that's going to create a problem. Take a ride down Route 21 in Newark, they have them, they're falling apart. What do you do when you go to repave with those rumble strips? You create two seams now, which is going to probably rip apart the roads. Colfax Avenue, Wayne, was done in three stages. Go down that road, and you can see the number of patches already on that road. And I truly believe if we would get this equipment or machinery, whatever we need to fill these cracks, and again, that's going to save the taxpayers money. I think the rumble strip money should have been used for that. Go down Hamburg Turnpike, that was just recently paved in Pompton Lakes within the past couple of years, and you can see the cracks forming already, and if nothing gets done, come this winter, if we have a bad winter, water is going to get in, freeze, expand, and create more, what I'll call bumps in the road, because when they fill those holes or whatever it is, it's not to the best, in my opinion here. So again, I truly think that we, as a county, we need to look at this equipment. My father always in Pennsylvania, you should see what they do to those roads. Even the local city roads are filled with tar, but yet we seem to ignore it, which, again, trying to save the taxpayer money. Again, I don't know what it would cost, but definitely look to get that. And then, I know at one point, we had the end caps on the cement dividers on Hamburg Turnpike and Wayne, and when there's an accident and someone hits into one of them, I see it takes quite a long time to have it repaired. And again, I was told that, well, we've got to order the equipment. Well, why don't we have one or two in stock? So that, you know, those are a danger. They're there for a purpose, and if we have a damaged one, and it doesn't get repaired for a couple of months, and someone hits it again, you know, what good is it? The safety of it is gone. So I think we really have to look at doing things that save the taxpayer money, not just to do things, and again, I truly think those rumble strips were a waste of money. Okay?
Hello, Ange Nakabur, 268, Washington Ave, Clifton, New Jersey. I have some handouts for you that I'll get to in a moment. I am sorry to see all the flooding that's gone on, and I'm glad the governor came to see what happened. I would like to emphasize again the importance of the community forestry plan for the county. I think you are now looking into a grant regarding hazardous trees, and that's important. But you really need to look into planting more trees and obtaining and protecting and preserving more open space. Trees are great service providers, they're huge pumps. The more trees that come down, the more flooding we have. So please plant more trees. I'd also ask you to take a look at the recent large historic settlement between a worker and Monsanto, and take heed that Roundup and Glycosiphate is a very dangerous chemical, and the use in its, of its use in our county should really be discontinued. So take a look at the current news on that. Getting back to preservation of open space and parkland, I have this historic document here that I wanted to share with you. I will try to read it, but I'll read a section of it just in case. Rifle Camp Park was named in recognition of the importance of the American Revolutionary History in the area of Passaic County. It served as an encampment for Washington's Army, and the Passaic County Park Commission, back in the day, honored our nation's history while performing its proper recreational and preservation services for Passaic County. And the park used to be called South Mountain, it became Rifle Camp Park, and its ultimate purpose in the county was to always keep this park in its near-natural condition. The Passaic County Park Commission dedicated this park for passive recreational use. This is a county document. To construct this park, the people of Passaic County were aided by the federal government through the Bureau of Outdoor Recreation, who applied matching funds to Passaic County Park Commission for the building of Rifle Camp Park. It should be noted that this area is located in a natural setting, surrounded by one of the most densely populated areas in the U.S. The cooperation by various county Freeholder Boards is noted in making Rifle Camp Park a lasting monument in the preservation of this beautiful land, a lasting monument, and the emphasis on preservation by the founders and the Freeholders and Park Commission. And I just wanted to let you know that and to give you this document. As we move forward, we're glad that there's been a public hearing about the improvements and the plans for Rifle Camp Park, but I want you all to keep this in mind, because it's very important to, not only are we still the most densely populated area, and it's still a green gem there, but honor the history of the people who came before you and what they tried to do in preserving that patch of green space for us.
Good evening. I'm Vera Lazar from 22 Spencer Ave in Clifton. First, I wanted to say I agree wholeheartedly with everything Ange said about the planting and preserving trees and the natural areas of Rifle Camp Park. I also agree with her statement about eliminating the use of pesticides such as Roundup in the county. And as for Rifle Camp, I submitted my comments both at the public input meeting and in writing, and just want to say again that about the need for, to balance any new activities with preserving passive recreation opportunities as well. The other thing I wanted to mention was that I had submitted a proposal from the Friends of Garrett Mountain for the restoration of the Riparian area at Barber's Pond, and I hope that that will meet with the county's approval. And I just wanted to say that all the, all the work would be done by volunteers from Friends of Garrett Mountain, and also we would be working in conjunction with the master gardeners. And so I hope that this is something that will work out. We would look forward to doing this project, and that's about all I have to say. I hope to be going to the fair on Sunday and hope to see you there.
I have a motion to add.
Make a motion to adjourn to K-66. Director, through you, I just want to make a little announcement. So as many of you know, this is a park we were preparing to do Phase Two of the improvements. We found out that there was lead contamination on the property. This late starter is awarded contract to the remediation company who will cap the park, and then we'll be able to move on with our Phase Two. So we're excited to finally get this project moving. Freeholders, Apter, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, Lapore, Deputy Director James.
Yes. I have a motion to approve the same agenda as I mentioned.
Freeholders, Apter, Bartlett, Best.
Stand from 226064. No to 42, yes to the rest.
Freeholders, Duffy, Lapore, Deputy Director James.
Yes. Just the work, what they've worked.
We see the pop. Freeholders, Apter, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, Lapore, Deputy Director James.